Welcome to the Board of Education's June 6, 2022 Work Session Meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. McMillan.
Please face the flag, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which we stand, from a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Watson, Mrs. Bab, and Mrs. Henderson are all traveling and will not be with us tonight. And also, our Knox County Law Department Representative, Gary DuPaul, is not here tonight, but we have the lovely Amanda Morris here with us in his place. Our June 8 regular session meeting will be held in this Summer Place Boardroom and begin at the regular 5:00 PM start time. On behalf of the Board, and as graduations have all been wrapped up, I just want to congratulate our class of 2022 and wish all of our 2022 graduates a bright future and much success. We could not be prouder of all that you have accomplished so far and cannot wait to see what the future holds for you. Finally, I wanted to take just a moment to welcome Dr. Ryswick to his first official meeting as Superintendent of Knox County Schools. How was your first day of school, Dr. Ryswick? Was it good? Would you like to say something about that?
That's great. Thank you, Ms. Christie. No, it was, it was, it was, it was, it was great. I mean, this is a dream come true, and it's nice to finally have the day to, to be here. And I thank the Board for this opportunity to be able to do it. You know, for, for me, I was able to spend my very first hours at schools. So I went to three of our schools to see summer learning today and saw some, some kids learning and engaged and teachers doing an incredible job with students. And so it was, it was a great way to start the day, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And are there any requested changes to the meeting agenda? So we have a motion to approve by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Satterfield. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So we do have a special recognition tonight of our student representative, Mr. Raymond Jen. This June's the last month, I guess, for, for you, right? And Ms. Satterfield has a few words to, to say, I believe.
Yes. Thank you, Chair. Thank you for letting me share some more about Raymond, because I was the one that was the student, the board rep, the, of the student committee. So I got to see Raymond go through the process and rise to the top. So since June will be the last month of his term, the Board and the Superintendent Ryswick wanted to take this opportunity to recognize our current Board of Education Student Representative, Raymond Jen. Raymond Jen has been a joy to work with and was dedicated, and was dedicated to attending not only Board meetings, but student advisory councils and student government meetings as well. Thank you for your hard work, and specifically the hard work that you put into getting the superintendent search input with the students. So thank you. A few highlights about Raymond are that he graduated from Farragut High School as valedictorian on May 22 with a 4.78 weighted GPA. During his senior year, he served as the Mu Alpha Theta President, the Tennessee Mu Alpha Theta Treasurer, and the Secretary of Science Club, organizing science bowls, invitation competition for over 50 students, and mentoring new Science Olympia team members at Farragut High School and Middle School. Raymond also served as a Secretary of Model for United Nations and is a participant of the Alliance for Education Equity Steering Committee from 2019 to 2022. He also serves as the Junior State, Junior State of America Secretary. You're busy, Raymond. Whoa. In addition to valedictorian, Raymond is a 2022 U.S. Presidential Scholar semifinalist and a 2022 National Merit finalist. He won the Best Speaker Award for 2022 Junior State of America Spring State and the Best Delegate Secretary Security Council for the 2021 Southeastern Model UN Conference. Raymond also took first place as a member of the Farragut High School A-Team in the 2022 Tennessee Science Bowl and first place in the Wi-Fi Lab and fifth place in astronomy in the 2022 Tennessee State Science Olympia. Whoa. Every year, we all agree how hard it is to say goodbye to our student representative. And Raymond, you are no exception. You will always be remembered for your commitment to this Board and being an exceptional part of the extraordinary couple of years. Please join me as we congratulate Raymond for his service of the 2021 and 2022 Board of Education Student Representative. And Raymond, if you'd like to say something and tell us about your future and how you're just going to make Knox County just so proud of what you're about to go do.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Satterfield. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to all of the Board members for all that you do. You know, this has been an incredible year that has flown by really quickly, but it's truly been an honor to serve this community with all of you. And this has been a great opportunity for me to learn so much about various things, particularly about this Board and all that it does for our students' futures, and the important role it plays in that. And so more than that, though, I am also grateful that this Board gives students a voice in their own education. I think that's incredibly important. And I think, you know, this year, even though I didn't perhaps achieve all that I maybe wanted to in this position, I really hope that future student representatives, next year is Grace, and then all the other ones after her will continue to carry out the work of raising, lifting student voices on this Board. So and then this upcoming school year, I will be attending Yale University with a potential double major in environmental engineering and computer science and economics.
So congratulations again, Mr. Jen. And thank you for serving on this Board, and I think you've accomplished quite a bit. So I would disagree with that. I think you've, you've done a lot. And, okay, and Dr. Ryswick, do you have a report now?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Raymond, as I said to you earlier, go to Yale and, and get your degrees and, and then come back to Knox County, right? That's what we want. We appreciate you. We're very proud of you. So, Madam Chair, thank you very much for this chance to bring your superintendent's report. I just want to say again, thank you to everybody for this opportunity to serve as a superintendent. Very excited about this. We have incredible teachers in our schools, incredible students, and to be able to lead this part of the organization, it's truly a blessing for me, so I appreciate that. We just want to hit a couple of things first. Just want to congratulate the seniors, as Ms. Christie has said, who graduated over the last three weeks. I know that it was definitely a challenging high school career for the seniors and lots of years of uncertainty, but they really showed a lot of resilience just to come through and do incredible things. And we're excited to see what they'll do in the future. And again, we hope they come back to Knox County or stay. It's very important for us for the future. A few other announcements. Our summer learning camp started last week. We have more than 5,100 students who are enrolled in those. As I said earlier, I was able to go to two elementary schools and a middle school today to see those in action. And it was really the engagement of the students, especially around the stream programming and then in the early literacy that they were doing. It was great to be able to spend some time with them and to see them very engaged. So our elementary summer camps will run through June 24. Our middle school summer bridge will run through June 28. And then we also have 604 students who are signed up for our KCS ACT Virtual Academy that runs June 13 through July 15. So registration is currently closed for that, but we're, we're excited about the number of students who are going to do that as well. And it was great seeing the teachers and staff supporting that from the teaching assistance. We have college students who, we have a tutoring component of that now that are in working with our teachers and doing that, as well as interventions have been added. So our hats off to those teachers who are coming in on summer and working. Appreciate what they're doing there. And then also, we're grateful to the General Assembly for, for providing those dollars for us to be able to address some of the learning loss that happened during the COVID time period. Finally, for my side, just want to say, beginning tomorrow and in the coming weeks, we'll be announcing some shifts in our administrative structure. It's important to emphasize that the work of teaching and learning happens in our schools and classrooms. And so our goal is to realign some of the central office so that we can be more responsive to those needs in individual schools and communities. So please stay tuned for those details. And again, very excited to get started, and thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Ryswick. And Dr. Murphy, please, we have an ESER priority update tonight.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Ryswick. Good afternoon, sir. My name is Dexter Murphy, Director of ESER Programs. Today, we're going to be sharing updates and highlighting updates from ESER III, Priority III, post-high school readiness. Unlike our reports from the previous, this past spring, this trimester reports will have like abbreviated updates. So you should have received the presentation today, I think, that has an appendix that has more in-depth updates on there. But this is going to give us an opportunity to really highlight and spotlight some of our works, the powerful work that we're doing within the strategy today and moving forward. So today, we have Dr. Keith Wilson, our Director of Career and Technology Education, and also Mr. Chris Tucker, our CTE Specialist. And they're going to be spotlighting two specific strategies from Priority III, post-high school readiness for us. Okay, just pulling us back to our vision for ESER. I always like to go here, making sure we understand that Knox County is going to strategically use our ESER funds so that all students across all schools and all student groups will have access to continuous support and tools needed to thrive in grade-level instruction to enable them for success post-graduation. Here, we have our reporting schedule. So we've made it through our first trimester, if you will, from February through May. We started with post-high school readiness, and in March, we hit foundational academic skills. April, we went over overcoming obstacles to learning. And then in May, we did effective educators. And now, so now we're back up to Cycle II, if you will, highlighted in June there with post-high school readiness there. I also want to put this slide in here just to kind of pull us back to the allocation that have been provided to our district through the federal government, through the ESER funds, just as a reminder. March 2020, there was 12.9 million allocated to our district. And December 2020, in ESER II, there was 50.8 million allocated. And then in ESER III, there was 114.1 million allocated in ESER III in March of last year, totaling $177.8 million allocated to our district. And I created this because I believe that, you know, while we want to focus, you know, while ESER III is the largest ever one-time investment, we want to make, I want to make sure I show this slide to show you the allocations across the years with this. So this slide shows our ESER I, II, and III dollars broken out in a multi-year-per-student spending scenario, if you will, across the grant terms. So ESER I, which is in purple there, under fiscal year 20. If we were to break out the 12.9 million over our KCS student population of roughly 60,000 students, it would equal $215 per student in school year 20 in comparison to $8,444 per student of our general purpose budget in school year 20. So as you can tell, it's a small percentage if we were to break and compare it to our general purpose budget there. Looking at ESER II, which is in blue there, if we were to break out the 50.8 million over our KCS student population of roughly 60,000 students, it would equal $211 per student if spread out over the course of the entire grant in comparison to an average of $8,900 per student for our general purpose budget. And finally, ESER III, you see the, the pattern there. If we were to break that out, it would be $634 over the course of the grant in comparison to the $8,900 with that. So in reality, the amount of money, you know, while substantial, it is relatively small percentage of what our district spends, especially when stretched across a full ESER grant period. So this is great, great information for us to know enough for us to share to our communities so we can better understand the full funding story of ESER and how it relates to our district budget as well. This is showing you this, a small slither of what our district has granted us with the support for our students as well. Okay, so this slide shows how the ESER funding involves multiple challenging steps, okay, for, for school districts to navigate before these dollars are reported, appropriated, and appropriated towards our school sites and to our students. And the longest and most challenging stage, if you were to guess that, is procurement, as you can see there with that. So procuring resources with ESER funds is, is a multi-step process that can play out over months, if you will, just months or half a year, up to a year in some situations. So we're, we're primarily operating currently in the planning phase. If you can see there how the planning phase underneath that you have procurement. So we're kind of in the planning, procurement, reporting cycle, if you will, there. So that's where we are with our, with our reporting and with our, our work with ESER. So I want just to show you guys where we are in that phase. It's a longer process, so it's a lot of legislation that we have to go through, obviously, and then the allocation of the funds to our district, and then the planning process that we went through with our stakeholders, and then also the planning process for us to decide where to put the money regarding the strategies, and also the procurement phase of that that we're going through, and then finally, the reporting out of the funds as well. So hopefully, that kind of clears up and gives you a clear visual of how the process works. Okay. You've seen this slide before, but just wanted to pull us back to it since it's the second trimester of this reporting. I'll let you know that where the 114 million has been allocated based on our stakeholder feedback, the 30, 30 million in Priority I, foundational academic skills, 19.7 in Priority II, effective educators, 18 million allocated in Priority III, post-high school readiness, 31 in our Priority IV, overcoming obstacles to learning. And lastly, we have 15.3 million in other allocations and indirect costs there. And lastly, I want to show you this before I turn it over to Dr. Wilson and his team, showing you the percentages of the breakdown and the gauges there. So we have 26.3% in the Priority I, 17.3 in Priority II, 15.8% in Priority III, 27.2 in Priority IV, and then 13.3 in other allocations and indirect costs. So that shows you how we're allocating our dollars towards our specific priorities. So now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Wilson, and he's going to walk through the strategies as a, just an overview and kind of spotlight two of our strategies.
Dexter, I have a question real quick, if you don't mind. And is it safe to say the effective teachers being 17% because this is a one-time lump sum money and it's not recurring?
Correct. Yes, yes. And that's what I want to just really highlight, that this is like one-time lump. So that's, that's exactly. And that's, and this is based on the stakeholder feedback where, when we did the feedback sessions last summer, where they, they thought the money should go as far as allocations. Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy, and thank you guys for giving us a few minutes to talk about our Priority III tonight. And so just to start with this slide for a moment and highlight that, again, I'm standing here as a representative of several folks and even people within, within their work that are working together on these action steps. And so as we share some updates tonight, just know that it's representative of the work of several people within my department and then outside that department as well. So you're going to get to hear from Chris Tucker, who works with Gina Kirby on the site-based experiences, and hear a little bit more about kind of the, the traction we've had with that work. Our middle school career exploration is kind of headed up by our team of Christie Seals and J.D. Faulkner. Obviously, Jody Overton, who's our counseling specialist, is, is over the counseling and advisement piece. And then Danny Trent, Salie Reynolds, and Tommy Watson are our high school team that supports our secondary schools, have been the ones really working on that credit recovery piece. So as you hear me talk about that, again, representative of the work and the time and effort that they've put into this since you heard from us last time, which was in February. So on that note, I'm going to share a few key outcomes from the work thus far, since you, again, have heard from us back in February. And the first couple of items on there are around the academy high schools model and the site-based experiences for work-based learning. We're going to do a little bit of a step-out strategy spotlight on both of those in just a moment. So I'm going to kind of jump over those for now and pick up with the, the third bullet, which is to implement consistent career awareness and exploration tools and resources for middle-grade students. And so as I mentioned back in February, this is one of those that's going to take probably a lot of the planning on the front end to make sure that we are procuring resources and establishing some connections with some curriculum and pieces like that that can be brought back and used in the classroom. And thinking too about the structures and the best fit for bringing that work back into work in our middle grades classrooms to really dive in a little deeper with some structured and consistent career awareness and exploration. And so to highlight some, I guess, work that's, that's happened in that, we, as Dexter mentioned, procurement is a big piece of that puzzle when you're, when you're trying to establish this work and the resources. And so our, we've had to put out a couple of different requests for proposal, RFPs, for college and career awareness services, which is really everything from supporting career events to providing some curriculum pieces, to online resources, things like that. to providing some curriculum pieces, to online resources, things like that. So we've put a couple of those out, and we actually have closed one of those bids and are in the review process right now in terms of being, moving towards being able to purchase those resources for the schools. And then we had another one that we're actually going to be able to tack on to an existing contract that another district had, which actually makes the procurement process much faster. So that was for another service, another software platform we were looking at to utilize, and so that's been set up as well. Chrissy and Dr. Faulkner, I should say Dr. Seals and Dr. Faulkner, both recent graduates, are, have been working with some smaller teams of leaders from our middle schools and elementary schools, and kind of trying to target those feeder patterns that are lining up with some of our Ford Academy High Schools. Again, thinking more strategically about how we're building that pathway into the high school and into some of the new structures that we're building there. And so they've established with our elementary steering committee, a fifth-grade focus, really looking at that last year and that transition into sixth grade, and what kind of activities do we want to build into the fifth-grade year, and then looking across sixth, seventh, and eighth, at what a build out of, again, sort of standardized exposure, awareness activities would look like in the realm of career exploration. They've begun that work really with the middle schools first, with sharing some of these career milestone benchmarks, what is it we expect students to experience while they're in middle school. And then we've actually just recently had something that I think will end up being beneficial, which is the state of Tennessee has now identified and kind of developed, and the state school board just approved, a sequence of courses that can be offered through the related arts in the middle school. And so there's a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade progression for career awareness, exploration, and then even pathway planning. And so, again, one of the hard things you may have heard me talk about before when it comes to this work is sort of where is it housed in the school? Who teaches this? Where does it live? And so having some structured courses around that and expanding what schools can offer through their related arts wheel is a great opportunity to, as we think about getting these resources and thinking about the work, where do we plug it back in? So that's a good opportunity that should be forthcoming on that. The Strategy III D, which we call it, implementing a system for creating and tracking a focused plan of study for high school students really comes back into counseling and advisement. How are we providing that structured advisement, that structured planning for students as they move through the high school experience? And we really began that work, this was one of those places where we were looking at some positions to help do that. And the first of those two positions, or first of the positions we were looking at were two, to support our counseling department and having some more supervision and support. So we've hired a lead college and career counselor for middle school and one also for high school, and those folks came on board back in mid-April. And they're just really going to allow our counseling specialist to have some additional feet to go out and work with our counselors on this work and expand that department support a little bit. And then we have hiring underway, if you recall back in February, for the college and career support positions that we were going to put into the schools. And originally, we advertised those, and we're thinking through those as college and career counselors. What we ended up actually creating were three different job descriptions so that the schools had some leeway to really decide, if you're going to get this resource, what's the best way for you to use that? And it could be hiring a counselor. It could be hiring a college and career teacher, like in the case of a middle school. We're talking about these courses that we could build out. You could actually have someone whose job was to go in the classroom and provide some of this structured support and lessons on those things. We also even had a classified or non-certified role that could be used, that would allow people to have sort of a college and career mentor that could work with students and do some type of pathway planning and things. And so we did that sort of by setting for the schools, you know, we're going to inject some resources into this system of counseling and advisement that you have. What's the best way you could utilize those resources to either, you know, start providing services for students in a way that you're not, or become more efficient at that by using these positions? And so we've, we're about 60% hired right now. It's a little hard for me because I don't control those positions to get the exact number at the moment, but we were somewhere between 13 and 15 positions still posted with schools looking to hire those currently. And last update for that particular item, we have had in the past, or in the past have used a online tracking platform called Scooter, which is a way for counselors to document and track sort of what their day is spent on, you know, how much of their time is spent on certain activities. And it really gives you an opportunity, if used well, to have some data to make decisions on the back end about places you need to enrich your services you're offering, or how to analyze how time is being spent. It can help counselors advocate for themselves in terms of where their time is being spent and in terms of things that they may want to take off their plate. And so we're expanding the use of that. And so the last piece on that is the procurement process rolling forward, and on that, I think the sole source got finished up today for that Scooter platform to expand the use of that. So that's another piece in terms of this whole advisement part that we want to highlight. And then the last one would be the tiered support for students earning and recovering credits. This is really, you know, we talked about this priority is the big picture of it, post-high school readiness, really is in that strategic goal we have around ready graduate. And so how do we ensure kids are on track and graduating in time? You know, so much of that is tied back into ensuring that they earn those credits and don't get too far behind. And so there's multiple ways that that work has happened and is happening. In the spring semester, back when I talked to you guys in February, we were just wrapping up the January blitz, which we had some closures, and then it ended up being part of a February blitz as well. And we ended up having 539 students that participated in that back in the January, February window, and 442 credits that students recovered through that timeframe. And if you recall, when we talk about this credit recovery through the Blitz program, it really is this kind of standards-based approach. If students have gotten, you know, let's say, a 50, 60 average in that class, and they've shown that they've mastered some of those standards, it's an opportunity for the teacher to come back, work with them, really in a tailored way to say, if we can show some evidence and we can go in and do some work in these areas, we can recover that credit, and it's very important for getting kids back on track if they've missed out on that first go-around. During this summer, we have a couple of different things going on. One is a summer recovery credit program. We've got 43 staff and 1,000-plus students participating in that summer recovery program right now, and our goal for that is that 95% of the participating students are going to recover at least one credit through that, I believe, and I didn't put that in my notes, but I believe that's happening at all of our high schools with the exception of Paul Kelly, because that's really the business that they're in anyway. And then last, we mentioned the summer learning camps and summer bridge. We have summer bridge for our middle school students, but we also have it for that transition from eighth to ninth grade. And so for those eighth to ninth grade, those rising ninth graders that were targeted as maybe needing a little bit more acceleration or kind of some onboarding support in terms of moving into high school and being academically ready, we have 10 different sites operating and 377 students currently participating in that eight-to-nine bridge program this year. So that's kind of catching you up on the ones we're not going to spotlight. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Tucker to talk a little bit about our site-based experiences and some of the work that he's been doing in that regard.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I am here before you to talk about site-based experiences related to work-based learning and career practicum courses across our district. As you can see, we've received a total of 14 different project submissions from a conceptual phase from nine different schools. We expect to continue to receive submissions from schools that are not on this list throughout the course of the summer and fall so that we can get those on our project plans. Currently, these are all in concept phase, what we would call concept phase, because we've had no design things done on this work. Our initial budget for each of these schools is $500,000, based on the numbers that Dr. Murphy gave you in this little slice of the pie. Some of the projects that we've already received will consume all of that, all of those funds for the projects they've submitted, and others will not at this point. So the expected project cost for each project will be a little more available to us once the designs have been completed by the design contractor. You guys actually have a proposal for that contract on this evening's agenda, I believe, that you'll vote on on Wednesday. So once that is approved, we will start site visits and the planning of all of that design work through our facilities team and those contractors. Let's see. We look forward to beginning that work. Once those designs are done, we will work with contractors that we already have on-term big contract through the facilities department after state board, or the state has approved these facilities changes. That is required, that is a requirement before we can begin any kind of facilities changes with this specific thing. So our goal was 50% of our high schools to have a completed project planned by December of '22. If these nine schools have at least one thing approved between now and then, we should be hitting that target. And these projects, they could be a new implementation, or an improvement, or a renovation of a current existing practice in the school. We have several school stores that have been put on this list. Many of those are renovations, and we actually have a couple that are actually brand-new school stores. So the difference in cost in those can vary greatly. So with that, like I said, we should be seeing more of these come in, and those will be continually reported through Dr. Murphy and Dr. Wilson. Thank you.
All right, and I will run through mine fairly quickly. So obviously, we've had lots of things happen around the 865 academies, and decided just to give you a quick update on that also tonight, since it's a large priority, not only under ESER, but part of Dr. Ryswick's initiatives as well. So we're excited to say that we have officially hired our seven academy coaches, which is a really crucial position when we think about this work moving forward. That is going to be a position that's really going to serve as a liaison with those community partners, with our convening and connecting organizations. Right now, that's, you know, working with KEF in the capacity that they've been working to support us, as well as the Knoxville Chamber, but really taking that load off the plate of the principal, and being that person that can kind of wake up every morning thinking about those business partnerships, identifying the needs at the different academies. Right now, that'll just be freshman academy for us, but identifying those needs that the freshman academy will have this next year, and being able to reach out and connect and find those partnerships that will help ensure that we have the types of experiences, the types of guest speakers, things like that, coming into the classroom that they're looking for. I'm particularly excited about the group that we've hired because of the different experiences that they bring. Again, we wrote that job description to be one that could be classified or certified, and the reason for that is because we knew there were people out there that had lots of great experience, be that in college and career support services or counseling, things like that, or really even some of our folks that have worked through Project Grad, through community schools, through things like that, that have had that piece where they've really worked with the community. And so when you look at that, we ended up having a variety of former educators, people that had been counselors and administrators, people that had been just classroom teachers. But we also hired a couple that had been, had worked more in a classified role around college and career supports. We hired one that had been actually a Project Grad employee and worked in Fulton High School for a long time, and is going to shift roles and be in that capacity there. And so I think that the diverse experience that this group brings, if we really work with them as a cohort, they're going to help each other really be a strong group at this work and at this job. So I'm excited about those academy coaches. PD, professional development, is a huge part of what has to happen to get this work going, and we definitely want people to feel prepared and adequately supported to do what it is we're asking them to do, and this is a lot of change for the buildings. So we are almost complete with our freshman seminar training, and that freshman seminar course, if you recall, is one where students come in that freshman year, and it's sort of that orientation experience where they get lessons around college and career preparedness, kind of soft skills, things like that. They are oriented to that portrait of a graduate and understanding kind of what it means to be a graduate in Knox County and the things that we're identifying as important. That's where the youth science work is done around personal kind of exploration and looking at interests and aptitudes and applying that to some research around careers, and then also where they'll be introduced to the academies and the pathways that their school will offer. So, you know, that's important to that decision-making point they'll have as they choose into that 10th, 11th, 12th grade work that they'll do. So we're almost done with that. We've got a few little cleanup sessions, June 8th and June 17th. Bearden had a larger team, and so we had to give some multiple options for them because we couldn't have so many subs at the end of the year to finish theirs out. And hopefully, we'll have some of the academy coaches that'll be able to join us as well since they were hired after the initial training during that time. And then last, I thought this was important just because of a way we're approaching the work right now. If you look back into sort of our spreadsheet of things we thought we would need to accomplish, one of those was around the master plan, which we spent a long time working together and trying to refine and finalize, and that was the big kind of moment for designation day. And then now, it's a matter of making that a useful tool, right? And so it's a big document. It's really hard to kind of put in the hands of a teacher or a principal and say, digest all of this and, you know, go do. And so we're trying to move from that document to really thinking out, you know, 30, 60, 90 days first semester, and come up with some implementation guides, is what we're kind of calling them right now, that really narrow the focus for schools. So it says to a principal or to a team, hey, in this first semester, these are the outcomes we're looking for for adults in the building. Like, what's happening with adults in terms of this work as we roll it out, and what should we be seeing out of students and student experiences in this first semester and then second semester? And so really trying to simplify for schools sort of their focus and not get too lost in all of the detail and the things that they could get very busy in if not. So that's something we're working on sort of internally right now and hoping to be able to offer to the teams, to the academy coaches and administrators as they're kicking off their fall semester in terms of where to really focus their work. And I believe, turning this back to Dr. Murphy.
All right. Thank you, guys. So this is just in closing, just to show you a brief, I guess, donut graph, if you will, of our progress with our action steps. So within our action steps, within this specific priority, Priority III, we have 72% of our action steps are on track, 11.9% are complete. We have 6% with minor delays, and we have 9.5% that's not started. So we're looking very good there within this specific priority. It is safe to say, and Dr. Wilson, you correct me if I'm wrong, but it's safe to say that this is kind of phase one, if you will, of this priority. So a lot of these things are completing these action steps, so they're beginning to move into phase two, which will have new action steps. So you may see some of these numbers at next time, the next trimester reporting, kind of go, you know, fluctuate, if you will, because there's going to be new work to be done with that. So this is phase one of that, so it's looking good, but just be, you know, mindful of that the next go-around with reporting. This is, I like to call it a report card here. So this is a report card for Priority III. They are on track, 100% of the strategies are on track with a criteria level of three or four, and also the action steps completed. As you can see there, 10 out of 84 are completed. We have 61 out of 84 are on track, and we have five out of 84 that are with minor delays, and we have eight out of 84 that have not been started. And again, some of those barriers and challenges that we're talking about are the procurement timelines and just the staffing overall in general across a lot of our priorities, really, if you will, within ESER. So we're looking good. We're doing great work. Hats off to Dr. Wilson and his team with what they're doing. So just behind the scenes, just seeing them meet weekly to monitor 84 action steps is not something, you know, that we should take lightly, so they really, really dig into this work and really track it and monitor it on that level. So that concludes our report, unless you guys have any questions. And just letting you guys know that July is Priority I, foundational academic skills.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. Dr. Ryswick?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just to put this in perspective, I know it's a lot that we go over every month, but just interesting, Wall Street Journal put out something about a week ago that of the $122 million that the U.S. Department of Education gave out, 93% of that is still unspent. And so just, again, kudos to Dr. Murphy and to all the leads on those teams, the fact that we have a very detailed plan, a very good spend-down plan. I think it just speaks to the work that we are monitoring that, we are reporting it out, that we're way ahead of the national curve when it comes to that. So I just wanted to give, again, a public shout-out to you for that, so I appreciate that, Dr. Murphy.
Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions, or Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure exactly about your task, but in that first set of slides, there was a percentage of readiness for secondary, post-secondary, and it was, I don't know, somewhere 15 points up, 16 points up. Does that, 15.8, I guess, does that include all of the regular high schools?
It does include all, within that 15.8, within the post-high school readiness. Yeah, it applies across all high schools.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Now, I guess my question would be, without identifying either the best or the worst, can you tell me roughly what you think the lowest was and what the highest was? If you you looked at individual schools as far as this?
I don't have that data in front of me, but I can get that to you, because it is in our spin-plan. We have a detailed spreadsheet that has that spelled out to you, but I can shoot that over to you this afternoon, if you want that, and it does detail that out.
Well, I'd just like to know in the next day or two, and I think, I mean, all this, but this is great, and I support it, but unless you have a child or a student that's going to participate in one of those, or experience one of those programs, the general public out here doesn't really pay much attention to it. Whereas, now, this is just my opinion, but if we could show that 20% or 25% at some point, or maybe better, of the students that are graduating are ready for some post-secondary training, I think that's a fact that would stick with the average.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Dr. Reiswick?
All right, thank you. If I could follow up, Mr. McMillan with some, so just to make sure, and Dr. Murphy, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that that's showing on that one that 15.8% of the 114 million is committed to
Correct.
post-high school readiness. That's not saying that that's the percentage that are high school ready, correct?
Exactly, correct.
Okay.
That's the 15.8% of the 114 million dollars.
That's about the allocation of the dollars.
The allocation of the money, yes.
But so, I don't, but you do ask me a good question about the percentage of students per school that are ready graduates, if you will, and that is a number that we can get for you.
What we've done for quite some time.
Right, it's higher than, correct, and I'll say it is higher for that. There are a couple ways, through ACT score, through industry certifications, or certain kinds of things that can do, but we can definitely get that data for you, but I assure you, it's higher than that 15.8%.
Well, I don't think so.
Right, that's just the allocated dollars, so I just want to make sure, just to clarify that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification.
Ms. Bounds?
Yeah, all those lights were coming on a minute ago, so I don't, see now, that one's on. So, sorry, so, any more questions? Okay, so just ignore the lights, Dr. Murphy, because apparently something's
All hearts and minds are clear.
Yeah, I think we're good.
Thank you, guys.
So, moving into the discussion of our regular June 8th agenda, for the consent agenda, seven, eight, or B, are there any questions or discussions about those items? And seven, C, one, any discussion there? And items and contracts, one or two? Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question, just a quick question on the bus contracts, any changes, Russ, or is this basically the same as previous?
The way that we've got the contracts set up is basically the same, although we've taken a level of compensation for bus, so that's part of the contract that we're going to break back. We're also increasing the fuel index cap, which is, it was capped at $4.30, which is why we have to do these type of payments, we're asking that board to increase that cap to $6.50.
And it was $4.30? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So, items three or four? Five or six? Six? Okay. Okay, Ms. Owen?
I'm looking at the prepaid expense card, and it looks like the agreement listed is how the card works, but the fiscal note says that it's an administrative web tool. So, I'd like some clarification of what we're actually doing here. The card, I assume, would be much more cost than the administrative web tool?
So, here's the administrative web tool, that's the cost of the fee to use the card, so the card currently, so the schools, the officers will purchase the required uniforms, and then we will reimburse them. What this preloading card will do, will put the dollar amount on there, so they can just present the card. So, the actual $2,670 is actually just the fee to use the card, the cost of the uniforms themselves are covered within the security measure, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so items six or seven? Eight or nine? 10 or 11? 12 or 13? Ms. Owen?
I have some concerns with the pilot with NIT. Looking at online for training, it's requiring two days of training for our teachers, and I'm wondering if they are aware that they are going to have two additional days. It also requires recording throughout the school year, and I'm interested in how much additional that's putting on our teachers. It seems like we keep putting more and more on their plates, and we're never taking anything off. So, if we are willing to put our teachers through this pilot, I want to know what they are getting out of it, what do they get? They're putting in two extra days, and lots of extra recording.
I did not do that.
Is that you, Dr. Reiswick?
Yeah, I'm, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Ms. Owen. I may actually ask Ms. Thompson if she might come up to speak to some of this, but I believe that the individual schools, this is a continuation of a program they've already begun, and so I think this is a continuation, and again, I'll let Ms. Thompson speak to it, but I believe they picked to do that, but I could be incorrect, is that?
We have expected them to do, so they've, it's my understanding, the principals have talked with their leadership team, this is something that they're all aware of.
So, have they already had two days of training, and this is a continuation?
They did this last year, they did this last year, and I think the expectation is that they will have that again this year as well. This was an optional program that they, as a school, they were, we offered this to several schools, and these were the ones that chose to do this. I mean...
Do we have any idea how it's going, how they're using the data?
We've not asked that, other than, than, other than that they did want to, they asked to participate in it again. I can certainly get that information for you, if you'd like.
If I could jump in, sorry. I'm not aware of each individual schools, but I do know, I was at Karnes Middle School today, and Brent Glenn, their principal, actually took me into the counselor session and, excuse me, offices, and showed me, they actually were recognized as a school of promise for their character education using this program. He talked about how they had embraced the community, and the Students' Art Club had come up with the seven different pillars through the community, and they had those painted on their walls and in their cafeteria, and he was talking about how big an impact that it was making, and I asked him, I said, was this the same from NIT, their character development? He said, yeah, this is what that all came from, and that it had brought a lot of things, again, it's one of the schools, but I was there today, and he was telling me that. So, he said that they had Beaver Brags that they were doing from that, and they had, you know, hanging all over the walls, and would bring kids up, and recognizing them for demonstrating things like endurance, or empathy, or those kinds of things, and so, that, he said it had actually been a big lift to his staff, and again, that's one of all the schools that are listed there, but I did witness that firsthand from Karnes Middle today, when I was there.
That actually concerns me more, because this list is a pilot, and what you described just now is something that we created in early 2000, so...
He, it was funny that he said, I mean, this is, this program, we were not doing early 2000, but to your point, he said, these things are things that have been done before, but that he felt, that the staff felt, and that he felt, that, you know, everything is old as new again, right? Things cycle through, but from NIT's side of bringing this character education in, that they felt that that was strong. Again, it's one school's account from what he said today, but he even said, you know, these aren't, these aren't brand-new ideas, but it was something that his staff had really clinged on to. So, again, I can give that one school's account, based on what I saw today, but thank you.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Reiswick, I think this will probably fall to you. The letter of commitment with UT, can you just talk a little bit about this, and is this in a variety of schools, and is this additional work for students? Can you just talk a little bit about this program, please? This is the varied practice reading research study.
Thank you, Ms. Horn. I actually will ask Ms. Jackson to come up to speak to it, too, but my understanding is with UT becoming a literacy center, that this, that Dr. Reed is one of the top people in the United States around that, so this is an option for us to bring in some other ideas for middle school reading intervention that we've had, but I may have taken everything you're getting ready, same as Jackson, sorry.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Reiswick. You just said it perfectly, actually. Dr. Reed has been hired as the Director of the Center for Reading Research at the University of Tennessee, which is in establishment right now, it's in the process of being established, I guess, and this is a federal grant that she has in her previous institution, and would like to bring it with her. We are under no obligation to continue to, to continue with the program. It gives us the opportunity to do a very slow investigation of her process. We're teaching particularly older students to read, middle school students who are struggling readers, it's something she's been working on that teachers like better than they've liked other reading interventions in middle school, and so, it will be a slow start, if we're interested. We can scale back at any time, or we can accelerate at any time, based on what the schools experience through her onboarding with them, and their, you know, possibility for continuings. But we're interested, because we need additional ways to support particularly our older students who are struggling to read, and this has proven to be very effective in the sites where she's delivering it, and most importantly, the teachers have really embraced it, as much, they feel like it's much more connected to what they're doing in the classrooms, and is much more effective than what they've been doing, so that piqued our interest.
So, that's in her previous, where she was previously, that was the testimony from those teachers?
Yes.
Okay, so will this be open to, how is it going to start? Will this be open to a handful of schools initially?
So, I think what we'll probably do is have a meeting with schools, and let them know about this possibility, and gauge interest from there, and then, and she's only interested in starting with sixth grade to begin with, so it would be identifying which sixth grades in our middle schools are interested in that pilot, and then also looking at what we have the capacity to support.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Satterfield?
Yes, and Susan, I just want to let you know, I had the opportunity to, my interns had the opportunity to sit under Dr. Reed's, one of her trainings, and the reviews, I wasn't there, but the reviews from the interns and their college students on how to implement reading, and they're not teachers, was very positive, so I think that her program, I didn't go to it myself, but my college student interns really enjoyed it.
So, moving on, in contracts, items 14 or 15? 16 or 17? 18 or 19? So, board policies, A or B? Ms. Owen?
It's been a while. The reason for rescinding number B, AB, which is the 111 duties of officers, is because we're combining those in B110.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments on those? Board policy, C or D? E or F?
At the receipt, there should be a page up to the side with suggested changes to, E130, and there are a couple of different things to look at. You have the one that's on the agenda, and at the very bottom, line 35, I think is where it starts. We talked about whether to allow political organizations, whether to allow candidates. My recollection was that we decided no on individuals, and I believe the language that is attached to the agenda sort of leaves that vague and would allow it. And so, I have some other language up to the side that I would like to suggest as an option.
Mr. McMillan? Or did you have?
I have, well, since I was at the policy review, we've always allowed political candidates or parties. Why now have we decided to change? They've always played a role. And it was, you know, as long as you went through the process, it was open to anybody.
I think the question that came up was because it's really not an advantage to a candidate, because they can't have any signage, they can't do any campaigning, they can't have, they can't pass out anything, so all they can do is meet and rent, based on wall right now, so...
They can't have any signage if they rent, and it's after school hours or anything? Well, we have in the past, so I like to say, you know, maybe we're in violation, but...
So, I think that's confusing to people, because technically, yes, they could rent the building, but they couldn't do campaigning, they couldn't have signage, they couldn't hand out flyers, so I think it will shore it up some, to just make it clear, because now, if they do that, I think, if I were a candidate in that situation, I would feel like I had wasted my money and time to rent a space, and then realize I can't really do what I needed to do there.
Well, we have political clubs that meet once a month at the various schools, Republican clubs, you know, I don't know about the Dillier. Yes, they do, there's one that meets at Carter, and one that meets at Karnes Middle, in the library, unless they've stopped. But it sounds to me like, you know, that the people that object the strongest are the people that don't really want to participate in politics in Knox County. Now, I didn't have anything to do with them making this partisan, as far as the way you read, I know some people... I know some people are really upset about that, but, you know, I wondered if that was a, if that was a carryover or if that was a reach.
I think one of the issues when we discussed it at Policy Review was individual candidates. Like, let's say, let's say a sitting school board member decided to have a meet and greet at a school.
Right.
Then that might give that school board member, maybe people in the community because they were a school board member might think that that school was endorsing that candidate. And, and then we talked about the disadvantage. I mean, if you can't hand out signs, you can't collect money, you can't campaign, you can't have anything like that if that was actually beneficial. And, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, board members, but I think at Policy Review, we were talking more along the lines of individual parties having those events.
I think we were talking about individual candidates, yes.
Rather than clubs. And I don't know, Ms. Morse, if you have...
I, I can't say that the law department went through the policy and the reason that the initial language was in there about how individual activities like that might be disfavored is because the law is very clear that we have to be content neutral when we try to prohibit a type of speech. And saying that an individual is not allowed, but other political groups are still allowed could be viewed as inhibiting a particular viewpoint or a content. It's legally more advisable to say it's disfavored as opposed to an outright ban, particularly because we allow a wide variety of meetings to happen in schools.
I don't understand, just to follow what you said, Madam Chair. If it were a sitting school board member and they had one opponent or, you know, more than one, I would think that they could, you know, go through the process, rent the school, invite everybody that they wanted to. And, you know, you'd have to be kind of a, you know, a little offbeat, I think, to think that the school was endorsing somebody. Now, if they had a lot of friends that were on faculty at that given school, you know, maybe that would give them somewhat of an advantage, but, but I still, I just don't see the point in it. You know, I just think it's, it's more this stuff that, that we're going through that is unnecessary.
I think the change to disavowed or whatever that language was, I think that's confusing to the people who have to decide whether to approve something. And I think it would be easier to either say yes or no.
What's our...
That might violate the law.
What, Ms. Owen?
I think that might make it more likely for an individual to say, no, we're going to ban this particular type of meeting, but not others. It's just, it's a tricky scenario and it, like, I understand that disfavored does sort of imply sort of that sort of choice wise too, but not allowed is a pretty clear standpoint for the school board to take.
Well, not allowed is very clear, but I, I want to ask Ms. Owen, you know, what would, if anybody could go through the process and rent the school and as long as everybody followed the same process, you know, what's so hard about that or so difficult or so unfair?
I didn't originally come up with the question. I was just working out the language. So when, there has been a recent candidate who did have a meet and greet in the school. And when that was questioned, my question was, why? Why would you have a meet and greet where you can't campaign and you can't give out signs and you can't do all of those things that are necessary?
Well, you can campaign, I think.
Not.
You can't campaign, you can't...
Not under current school board policy.
You can't get up and talk about, I'm running for state rep or I'm running for commissioner or whatever.
You can say just about anything. You just can't have your giant sign that says vote for me.
And this is what I believe. I think that's a community service, more than a political thing. That's my opinion. And again, everybody has the same opportunity if they choose to go through the process. Now, you might have one where there to be 100 people show up and their opponent might not be able to get to 10 or 15. That's where it might be a little embarrassing. And I think that's kind of where we're headed here, but y'all do whatever you want to.
I think the goal was more to make sure it was neutral and that we could have forums and that we could have all candidates, but not, you know...
I think it might make more sense too when the board member who recently had that come up at their school is here to speak to it too because she was at Policy Review and, and did get some pushback as well because, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do think that she had a lot of feedback and insight into how that kind of played out.
With all due respect, we've got tons of things that as a board, we need to deal with without getting involved in politics and elections. Now, that's just, that, that's just the fact. I don't think, yes, if you ban everything, that's one way of dealing with it, just ban everything, you know? It's just, that's my opinion and we'll have to live with it if you all, if that's what your, your wishes are, but...
I think the confusion from the staff is that we have policies and we have laws that say they can't campaign.
Well, maybe we ought to go back and look at those files.
Well, that's what's been added here, but when we look at just our use of facilities, it's not clear. And so looking to clear that up is where this came from. So that's not, that's not me bringing it. That's confusion over what we can and can't do because we have policies that say, no, you can't campaign, you can't have signs, you can't do all these things. And then we have the use policy that does not clarify any of that at all.
Let me ask you...
So maybe we need to, maybe we need to send this back and look at the language more.
Let me ask you this by my, do we still have religious groups or non-religious groups that rent the schools?
If you're asking me, I have no legal opinion on that matter.
Yeah, I believe we do.
Our policies, yes. And our policy is that you can.
Okay. Then they advocate something, you know? They may advocate Satan for all I know, but they, as long as they follow the process, what's the difference?
Campaign finance and state law. It just overcomplicates the matters for politics.
Ms. Horn, did you have something?
Thanks. I have a question. So, okay, going back to Policy Review, remind me, was this policy one that Gary brought to us that we needed to review? Is that correct, Ms. Morris?
Yes, I think he inserted some proposed language and I could also easily say that he could combine the two and include the additional language, which makes it clearer.
So, yeah, so I think, I think that's where it started. I think that's what, you know, brought on the conversation that we started at Policy Review. So I think that a couple of questions, and it sounds like we need to just, we need to go back and review this again, but I think that a couple of things. One, I don't think that the intention had ever was to disqualify any group from meetings. So if a Republican club or Democrat club is meeting at a school, I don't, we didn't even talk about that, so I don't think that there was any sort of, you know, there was no intention to disqualify. I think the, I think that what we need to talk about is if it's allowable for candidates to hold, and, and also, this also would not, not negate having a public forum where you have several candidates being invited, whatever. I think the question really is if we are going to allow candidates, I definitely see your point about everybody can go through the same process, certainly, including sitting school board members because you would have to, as a sitting school board member, you would need to go through the same process as somebody that is not. So that's really the question. So one more question to you, Amanda. Could, is it, it is not allowable under state law for, for a candidate to use a school facility and have their campaign materials? Is that accurate?
That is my understanding of a very complicated area of campaign finance law, but that is what supports our board policies about those matters, yes.
So if a candidate wanted to quote-unquote rent a school building, they can do that, but they can't have any of their campaign materials?
Right. They can't have signs out front that says, you know, school board candidate so-and-so, vote for so-and-so, and they definitely can't pass that up.
So we could still allow it, but it would have to be very clear that you cannot have any of those things, which, which we, that's, that's going to be a challenge. I mean, that's, I think that's part of it, Mr. McMillan, is that that's going to be a challenge. Like, if, if somebody rented our building, are they really going to adhere to the policy? Would be, yeah, who monitors it? So then, is the school left, you know? So I think that's, I think that's kind of where you get into a sticky part of it.
Yeah, especially, especially with administrators because if they're not there to police it, so to speak, and then someone complains, who's going to be, you know, blamed for that or who ultimately would be...
So I think that's part of what our conversation was, so...
Well, in the 2020 elections, local elections, there were plenty of judicial candidates, law director, and others that participated. They made all the rounds. So I guess they were in violation, maybe.
I have no legal opinion on that.
I didn't think you would.
Are you saying that?
It's Mr. McMillan keeps turning a lot.
I have assistance talking.
Ms. Owen?
I think, let me, I do, I think I can. So, Mr. McMillan, are you saying that the campaign, that the, they, when they were campaigning, they went to like the Republican club meeting or whoever was meeting at a school? So I think that's, that's what he was saying, that, you know, if there, if a, if a club, if any sort of club is meeting in a, right, right. So, so that's, and that's good to know. I didn't realize any clubs met at schools, so that's good to know. That's helpful, so, right. That's definitely different.
Yeah, y'all do what you want to, but I assure you, if you follow through, there will be some people upset about it in the general public.
Well, that's...
Now, not that they may be a very small minority and you can, you can rein.
Well, but, Mr. McMillan, we didn't realize that that was even a thing, so that was not part of our discussion at all when we talked about it at Policy Review. So that does change it.
Okay, maybe you should send it back and ask the law director to take a look at it.
Yeah, we could, we can definitely send that one back to Policy Review, I think. I don't think so. I'll just talk loud. So are we good? H or I? So moving on to grants, A or B? Ms. Horn, did you have something? Where's your microphone? See, I can't tell because the lights aren't working. Okay.
Oh, now mine came on.
See, see, we just, we just say it and it comes on. Ms. Satterfield, did you have something? Okay. So items C or D? E or F? G or H? Moving to item 10, contracts, item A or B? C or D? E or F? Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a quick question as to whether our officers currently wear body cameras or if this is new.
Mr. Oaks?
Our officers have had body cameras for four years.
Okay, I thought so.
These are just better cameras.
Okay.
They're easier to manage for the outdoors.
Thank you. I thought so, but I just thought I'd ask.
Item G? And moving to regular agenda items, item 11, A, Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you, Board Member Christie. So just giving the board an update of where we're at with everything, the, the last meeting that we had when we talked about the superintendent evaluation and we voted upon, we voted to have the search committee to own that process. And so I'm asking Terry to find a date for the search committee to convene in June. And with that, I've already, I've already received the evaluations from TSBA, our search firm, and I have some additional resources that, that I have on my own. And if you all, as board members, want to send me anything or send it through Terry of what you would like the search committee to evaluate when it comes to the superintendent evaluation process, we'll also include previous evaluation process. So the goal is, at the search committee is for the search, the committee to discuss what this evaluation can look like or should look like. And then I, my hope is to bring it back to the board in July and we all look at it and give feedback. I would also like for us to vote on the superintendent evaluation come August, just simply because the board is going to change. And we have, we were the ones that hired the superintendent, so I think we should just finish it all because for that reason, then also on the flip side, having new board members come in, give an input and voting on something that they didn't have any process on, it could be a little unfair for them, but that's just my recommendation and suggestion. But the search committee will get together, we will recommend to the whole board. So in between now and the meeting sometime in June, if there's board members that want to see something in the superintendent evaluation and want the committee to evaluate that, send it to Terry through us. But ultimately, it's the board's decision. We just want to consolidate through the search committee.
Thank you, Ms. Satterfield. Items B or C? And I'll just speak briefly to these since they are both South Knoxville items. Item B was for Coach Clark Duncan, and I will say that he has officially retired now. So I know that has been a discussion in the past that, you know, when we name something after someone, they have to be officially retired. And I will also tell you that the community has been asking for this ever since I joined the school board. So, and it is something that Commissioner Daly and I both support. And item C is kind of a cleanup from the former BMX project at South Hill Middle School. Coach Stafford's name was on the original field that they were going to turn into a BMX facility. And the goalposts were removed, which tells the name of his sign. And, and part of that, when they were having those discussions and meetings, they pulled Mr. Stafford in and, and told him that when they rebranded it, they would name the new fields and the lower fields both in his honor. And this is kind of more of a follow-up on that since, you know, he does have the field, but not really a prominent sign displayed anymore. So that's what those two are about. So, questions? Okay, public forum, Ms. Satterfield?
There's nobody on public forum.
Yes.
Either B or C, but just a question. Does it, Mark Knopf had, is it the stadium or something? At Powell, maybe, because he was over there for many years, doesn't it?
I think, that's the Field House, right, Ms. Fams? I believe, yeah.
Or something, yeah.
Okay. I don't object to either one of these. I just, I just...
Yeah. Several letters from community members that were sent in about this, this one as well. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So, I guess I'd just like to say two things. First, of course, I hope that all of our students and staff are having a wonderful start to their summer. You all deserve a break after this long year. So, rest up and enjoy the great weather with your family and friends. And I won't be here this next year, but I can't wait to see all the great things that you all do. And then, the second is, although it's been two weeks, I kind of want to speak to what happened in Uvalde, Texas. While back, I just wanted to offer my deepest condolences to the families and community there. You have gone through so much more grief than anyone should have ever have to face in their life. And I just want to say that our community and our school district is there to support you. My hope is that action can be taken to prevent these tragedies from ever happening again because I can only imagine the anguish that would, you know, what would it be like if something like that happened here or anywhere else in the country, so.
Thank you, we'll see if this works. So, again, several have already congratulated our 2022 graduates. And in addition to our, at Ferragut High School, we honored during graduation the 16 National Merit semifinalists. We honored our valedictorian, Mr. Jen, which was wonderful. We also, I'm always amazed every year that we have Air Force Academy, what are they called? Cadets that are, that are honored with, as Air Force Academy cadets. That's such a big thing and it blows me away every year. So, we had two this year, Kate Austin and Paul Kronzer. And then, we also just were notified, just possibly even today or late last week, we had a Naval Academy recipient, Nathan Rexick, who will be going to the Naval Academy. And so, so just a great shout out to these guys who are willing to go serve our country. And also, we have state championships, ladies softball and men's baseball. And so, proud of all of these accomplishments. I always hesitate to congratulate kids because there's so many things going on and it would be impossible to remember everything or to know of everything that's happening. But, but these were just a few of the ones that were on my radar this week. And so, I just want to give a shout out to these amazing kids and so proud of all these 2022 graduates.
They had a really good baseball and softball team. The baseball team was, lost the game that would have put them in, to send them to the state. But they're only losing one or two players. So, they should be very committed and connected. And the same is true of the softball girls. They, they did make it to the finals and were the runner-up, I guess you'd say. But it's my understanding that they only lose one or two players. Where it's double elimination. I read in the paper, but I didn't bring it with me. Can't remember the young lady's name. But she pitched something like, I don't know, 289 batters or innings or something. I mean, it was a remarkable number for one individual. You know, even though softball is different than baseball. But I would like to congratulate both of those. Thank you.